The school is not to be designed or to be considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated by the agenda. Visitors requesting permission to address the Board of specific agenda items should sign in before the meeting starts on the form on the board table. The Board requests a discussion time limit of three minutes on any specific agenda item, and we ask visitors to make only one appearance per item. We ask those addressing the Board to speak from the podium and to state their name and address. Board Policy 0167 dot three dictates that personnel issues will not be addressed. Concerns about an individual employees of the district should be brought to the superintendent or designee. The meeting site is fully accessible, and any person requiring further accommodations should contact the superintendent at the School Corporation's central office. The Board of Trustees respectfully request those guests and visitors in attendance to be courteous and silent for self. As always, before we start, we open up with prayer. Mr. Wyler?
Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us tonight as we discuss school board business, be with our community children as they have a, hopefully, a fun summer, as we know that it's not going to be a normal summer. Please be with us in the next months as we prepare and for the return of school and make some tough decisions that weigh on our community and as far as the safety of our community and our kids in our community. So please be with us and guide us in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Call the Word. We do have everyone here. Ms. Hutchinson is joining us on Zoom, so she is here with us also. So, Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hurd.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Again, roll call, we have everyone here. Mission Statement, Lisa.
Our name, Community School Corporation, will cultivate and reach every student by influencing their lives through the power of education.
Thank you. By the means, superintendent announcements and celebrations.
Thank you, President Purtron. Tonight, I only have really one item to share with you, and once I'm completed with sharing some of that information and maybe taking some more questions as well, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tate for the remainder of announcements and celebrations. He has an announcement regarding personnel this evening, as well as a brief update for the Board on our construction projects. So we'll end announcements with that. The one item that's on everybody's mind, of course, is reopening the school for the 2021 school year. It's understandable. There's a lot of anticipation and some anxiety around that as we're making our decisions. There's been a lot of information circulating about the reopening of schools. Some of it's accurate, some of it's not, some of it is somewhere in between, and as some of it is a moving target, of course. Last month, the Center for Disease Control, CDC, published a document outlining some conditions under which they suggested schools could reopen in the fall. It's a very comprehensive document, and they've shared it with the Board. Unfortunately, though, several articles and social media posts have taken portions of that document and kind of portrayed the list of those conditions as absolutes. And I think that that's kind of distorted some of what's happening in the local communities, within the local school district. Some of those items that were listed, that were shown in some circles to be absolutes were from portions of the document that was the most restrictive step that schools could take, and it was based on the community spread of COVID-19 as determined by the local health department. And so unfortunately, we've had to spend some time away from our preparations to try to address some of that, but it's understandable as well, because again, I know everyone understandably is interested in what's going on. But I wanted to share with the Board some of the steps that we've been taking in preparation for the 2021 school year. This is just a partial list of some of the things that we're doing and continue to do. Met with our administrative team yesterday for a long meeting, but I think a meaningful and productive meeting to prepare our schools. And some of these things are what we discussed. We're increasing our inventory of hand sanitizer, increasing inventory of disinfecting wipes across the district. We're preparing our serving lines and cafeterias for what may be required in those areas. We're planning for expanded seating in areas such as our cafeterias. Our secondary schools are looking at whether it's feasible to alter the length of passing periods and how that would work. It's a little bit more complicated than it sounds, a little more complex than it sounds, but just trying to minimize flow in the buildings or in certain given areas of the building. We're planning for additional entrances and exits for arrival and dismissal time of students, planning for car traffic flow as we anticipate there will likely be more car riders this year than in the past. So our teams are working on that, Chief Smith and the principals on those plans. We're addressing the need for our students and staff to stay hydrated during the day and to do that in a safe manner. We have purchased 10 ultraviolet germicidal irradiation devices, basically a UVC ultraviolet devices. They're using the medical field. They aid in disinfecting operating rooms. They've been using the medical field for quite some time. And we purchased 10 of those. They're on the way. Our classrooms and locker room spaces will be on a rotation, obviously with 10. We have more than 10 classrooms, and they're not inexpensive to purchase, but they will be on a rotation. And another advantage of this is if we happen to have a hotspot due to a positive case, we could concentrate those devices into one area of a building or one building to assist us with the disinfecting of the building. So that's a big step, I think, that we've taken as well. We're purchasing Plexiglas to be installed in all of our entrances where our clerical staff may be in contact with the public, or attendance offices for clerical staff with students, things of that nature. And our point of sale in the cafeteria, students could go through the serving line, just a little bit of separation, obviously, between the cafeteria worker and the student that's giving them their lunch number as they go by. We're putting in some protocols for our visitors and what that will look like to start the year, and of course, as you're going to be looking at and considering tonight, preparing for the opening of athletics and extracurriculars. But as I said, that's a partial list of some of the things that we've been working on to get ready. Another part of our planning process, which was a big part, was a survey that we administered to our community and stakeholders. We had 1,675 responses, so a very strong response. We had 1,266 of those 1,675 were parents. And so we really feel like we have a good cross-section of parent input from that survey, 285 employee responses, and 116 student responses. I think we may have given that survey out after they returned some of their devices. That could have had something to do with that. We didn't have a captive audience either, like we'd had them in the classroom. But a lot of employees, a lot of parents, there was a lot of commonality in their top concern areas. Student learning while school was closed, student gaps in content and skills when they return for this coming school year. Those two were in the top three of all three groups of employees, parents, and students. So those gave us some direction to look at and what to plan for. It was obviously something on our mind as well. Approximately 70% of our parents respondents indicated somewhat slight or no concern with students returning to school in August. So that was another strong data point for us as well to consider as we're talking about readiness of our families to get back to school. Some areas that were other top concerns, one of them was face coverings or masks, a lot of communication about that, a lot of, we've read some posts about that. It kind of goes back to the CDC document as well. We understand that concern. I think if you've been following some of the area school districts and some of what's been shared just in the last two days, we're really trying to work with that and understand that area, because we're educators and parents as well, and we understand the practicality of that, and so we're very, very mindful of that. So I just ask everyone to understand that, and we're going to, as Boone County school districts, work to align in that area as well. So I just would ask everyone to understand that we are understanding of their concern there. There was another top area concern, which did not surprise us, and that was the need for our students in transition years to engage with their school prior to the start of the school year. So primarily, our kindergarten students entering school for the first time, our sixth graders making the move from elementary to middle, and of course, our freshmen making that move from eighth grade to high school. And we cannot forget the number of students that we have every year that move to Lebanon and will attend our schools for the first time. That's a big transition for them as well. So I've asked the principals to work on plans to provide that opportunity for families, to engage with the faculty to the degree possible, the administration to the degree possible, and do it in person, be able to come to the buildings, be able to see the facility, to be able to make that work for those families. No details at this stage, but that is something that came out from the survey. We are, again, concerned about that as well. There were concerns about remote learning, not surprising. This kind of caught us all a bit by surprise, and so that's not a concern. I will say that I'm very grateful from parents' perspective of the survey. They were very thoughtful in their responses. I mean, they understand that this kind of, this was something that came upon us, that there wasn't a lot of time to prepare. That's not how we were built, to deliver instruction on a daily basis. So they're very understanding of that, but still, they said it was a problem. I mean, they were very honest about what was the problem. And so now we have an opportunity that if the Indiana back-on-track stages from the governor would happen to change and move back, we have the opportunity now, you know, to be able to engage with our staff and do some planning and preparation, help the teachers understand some of the expectations, but parents and students as well. So we're going to put some plans together for that and make sure that we address that concern. Another concern was students with medical conditions or families that are going to be struggling with the idea of returning in person. And we are preparing a way to deliver content to our students right now. When we make announcements to the community in the coming days, we'll have some more detail with that when they contact their schools. We're still working out some curricular choices and content choices. We want to make sure that it meets our expectations and it's of high quality. So we will have something in place. We have something in place in some of our levels, but our principals and Ms. Scott are working on that as we speak as well. Little look ahead, a peek ahead of what's next for everyone. This week, I'm going to be meeting with the superintendents of Zion'sville and Western Boone to align our plans. Then that afternoon, hopefully, I'll be meeting with the Boone County Health Department along with the two other Boone County districts, sharing our plans with them and getting their advice and recommendations. Then that late afternoon, a meeting with our LCTA teacher representatives, share plans with them and get their feedback. And then that evening, we will share our preliminary plans with our staff through an all-staff memo. That's this week. The next week, I'm meeting with Mr. Fettig from Mental Health America, and we're going to be sitting down and talking about how this is going to affect base and our preschool program and getting him up to speed on our discussions. Then we'll be meeting with PTO presidents and parent leaders from the high school that evening. And then on Thursday, I will present the plan to you as a school board at a special session on Thursday morning, the 25th, and after an approval, if you approve the plan, then we'll share it with our community that pretty much immediately after that meeting. We're ready to go and share it with them. So that's it. I know it's a lot, but there's a lot on people's minds. So the plan is under construction, aligned with the other Boone County districts, still has to go through conversation with the Health Department and an anticipated announcement date next Thursday. I'll pause there for any questions you might have.
I just got one. On where we at on the face mask, are the kids going to have to wear them?
Well, we have to take that past the Boone County Health Department to get their final recommendation. I think you'll see some directions that other school districts are doing. I think you're seeing some announcements even, probably even in the last few hours from some school districts, and I think you're going to see consistency around the area in that regard. There are some, one of the considerations for you this evening is the athletic and extracurricular reentry plan for your approval. And within that plan, our student athletes will be required to wear a face covering when they're getting treatment from an athletic trainer. I think you have to think about areas of your school district, such as health clinics, as a school clinics, students are receiving treatment in some way, they're in close proximity in a medical facility, even within our school facilities, that you need to be very mindful of that, and especially when you're going to be potentially in an area where there's ill, other ill students, and there could be a higher level of transmission of anything, but certainly, we're concerned about a particular virus right now. So without sharing the whole plan, I think you can kind of sense the direction that is being discussed about kind of special circumstances under which it might be necessary to do that. But in a general school setting, as I stated earlier, we're very aware of how practical or impractical it may be with students, you know, for six and a half hours trying to, you know, productively learn in that environment. But we'll get some final guidance and consideration from the Health Department on that, and that's something that we'll address, I think, in a manner that's consistent with what the parents are concerned about. Most parents are concerned.
Because the last meeting, didn't you say that this corporation was going to get a bunch of masks into?
Yes, yes, we do. And we did. We purchased our, I don't know, I'll see if Mr. Martin will nod to me if they are in yet or not, but they've certainly been ordered, the first disposable ones, I think, are here.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, so we did order a preliminary inventory of 10,000 disposable masks. Now, they are not, those are all a standard size. We don't have a child-sized mask. That's to have an inventory available in every building as needed. And we did order 1,000 of cloth face coverings. Those would be primarily for staff, faculty and staff to be able to use should they need those. We also want to support our staff in what makes them comfortable in delivery of instruction. So when we get to a point of making this announcement and sharing things with the faculty, I'm sure they'll share some of their either concerns or wants or desires with their principals, and we'll look at trying to acquire things for them that will make them comfortable as an instructor as well. So we do have a stockpile. And then the state of Indiana, if you've been following recently, the governor is taking some of the dollars provided from the federal government. And just this week, they surveyed all public and charter schools, asking us how many students we had, how many free and reduced lunch students we had, things of that nature, to prepare to make a mass purchase for the state of Indiana to help provide some inventory as well. So I think we're in pretty good shape from that standpoint, certainly in good shape with the likely direction of where we would be going with a final recommendation to the Board.
I just want to add that when we talk about our mission statement, talks about enriching their lives through the power of education, do so in a positive and safe learning environment, and we take that very serious. And no matter what decision is made, we're not going to make the right, people are going to think that we didn't make the right one. But we're taking this very serious, and there's a lot of people involved in this decision, and it's just not the Leaven School Board, and it's not the superintendent. We've got other schools with us and health departments. So I would just ask that, please, send an email, give a superintendent a call before you go on to social media, because there is going to be a lot of questions about it, and there's going to be people who say that we just made the dumbest decision. It won't be the last time that's been said to us. But we are taking this serious, and the safety of our kids and our employees are top priority.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. We're, our students and parents and staff, again, we're all consistent as well on wanting to get back in our schools. And I think that part of the plan that will be shared publicly, and I've shared it here, it's going to be consistent with the governor's back-on-track plans. So, you know, that's a little bit of a nod to Mr. Hurst's question as well. If you're following with what's happening within the stages, the back-on-track stages, then it's logical why you're seeing the school districts around the area that may be a few days ahead of us in their announcement with some of the decisions you're seeing, because it is consistent with that, it is consistent with the statewide decisions that are being made. But one of the reasons you see one school district or area being a few days ahead or a few days later is it's also based on community transmission. And so Hendrix County may be different, Cass County may be different, you know, Howard County may be different. So we have to make a decision for what's best for Boone County, which right now is tracking very consistently with Hancock County, with Hendrix County, with what you're seeing. So Brownsburg made an announcement just over the weekend, and Boone County is in a very similar place as Hendrix County when it comes to community transmission. So you will see very similar recommendations from the superintendent and superintendents, I should say, in Boone County. So I think that, you know, for the majority of what feedback I'm receiving, I think that should give folks a little bit more pause and comfort in what's happening, not all, as Mr. Purtron said, but we have some plans in place as well for that. And those plans take time.
Right.
You know, John Wooden said, you know, I want to be quick but not hurried, right? So we want to do it right. We want to do things quickly, but we don't want to be in a hurry.
Right.
Because we got to get it right. And we want to do it right for our kids. We don't want to announce an online or remote curriculum for students that we don't believe in. So we're going to take our time and make sure that it's good content. So some of those things will take a few more days or a week or so more to sort out.
And some of those making announcements are on the balanced calendar year and they start school earlier anyway.
That's true.
Yeah, Brownsburg, exactly.
It's not that we're really way behind, it's that...
Well, they got to get theirs out a little bit soon.
Yeah, they start sooner.
Well, I'll go one step further from a teaser since you threw it out there, Mr. Wyler, that at this point, you know, our intent is to start school on the advertised date and with the advertised calendar. So I'm comfortable sharing that, that that's our position right now. And a big reason for that is with all the problems that maybe came out during the survey from all constituents, we can do it. So if we ever happen to have to fall back, just to, you know, Lord forbid we do, but if we had to fall back, we can do that. And I'm not sure the calendar date would be the deciding factor there. We have families who planned their year and calendar around our calendar, and I think we should honor that to the degree we can, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Lisa, do you have anything? Okay.
I like that you and Western Boone and Zion'sville are all on the same page.
Yeah, I have as well. It's almost a daily conversation with the two superintendents, so they've been great to work with. I thank them as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on.
Oh, we have Mr. Tate, and this is the rest of the announcements. Thank you, though. We are moving on, but moving on to Mr. Tate.
Yeah, we're moving on to Mr. Tate.
You may or may not be aware, Mr. Don Montgomery, our director of facilities, who's with Aramark that we contract with, has taken another job in Arizona with a small college system. He will be with us through this month and then be working with them. So Don has been with us for 20 years and is to be complimented for his service to our school and our community. He is one of the prime reasons that our facilities are in the great condition they are with his knowledge and leadership, so we want to give him accolades, and we're going to miss him. Mr. Jim Walling, who has been with Lebanon Schools and Aramark for eight years, will now be our new director of facilities. I have full confidence in Jim and support the Aramark decision to bring him on as our leader in that. Lots of other administrators and teachers and other staff know Jim. He works hard, he's diligent, he's committed, and he does care for our schools. So I'm very pleased to have him as our new director of facilities. And at this time, I'm going to ask him to come forward and give you a briefing on our main projects that we've been, that he's been leading for the last couple of months. Mr. Walling?
Good evening. I've had brief interactions with all of you at one point, but never at this level, so I want to properly introduce myself. My name's Jim Walling. Like Charles said, I've been here for eight years. I've seen the ups and downs that have went through that, that we've been through. Started with the high school renovation project, and here we are today, almost to the day. I started on June 12th in 2012, and today's June 16th. So I actually found out I got the opportunity for this job on June 11th. That's great. So I would like to thank the Board, Dr. Millman, and Mr. Tate, of course, for the opportunity and just to serve Lebanon Community Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So briefly, I just want to show you what we've been doing thus far and whereof your money has been going, and the good job that we've really got ahead of ourselves this year. I know COVID-19 is terrible, but if you're in my world, it did help things a little bit. I hate to say that. First thing we did this year, the admin building, we tore the old rubber roof off, got rid of the ballasted rock and put an 80 mil TPO roof on there, and new commercial guttering that's all guaranteed for the next 30 years. So that's a good project, and it is complete. Next chat. At Central Elementary, the gymnasium roof, we did the same thing there. We tore the old roof off, put a new 80 mil TPO roof. We're trying to get all the old asphalt roofing out of here as quickly as possible. Next slide, please, Chad.
At Harney, we're doing some concrete pours and asphalt work on the Circle Drive in front of the building and then there along the 200 hallway. Just getting that going. The asphalt is not done yet, the concrete work is, but we anticipate the asphalt to be done in the next two weeks. Next slide.
Hattie B. Stokes, the flooring project just began over there. We're converting the rest of the building to VCT tile from carpet, getting rid of that nasty carpet that you can't clean very well, I don't care how hard you try. It's about 40% complete. Next slide.
And then, this isn't a bond project, but this is something we did. We got the shelving put up in there for the food pantry, and I find that that's important. We finally got the fire lanes opened back up the way they should be, and so got the food off the floor and gave her some room to work. Next slide.
Before I get to the welding lab, I'd like to talk about Perry Worth. We're getting ready to repave that whole front lot that's coming up, starts tomorrow, and will run probably through the beginning of next week, and that'll be complete. If anyone has any questions at any time, please just jump right in. The middle school, we're going to, we have milled and patched in lots A and B. Lot C was replaced about three years ago. We're trying to hold off on doing lots A and B. Asphalt's really expensive, so you have to try to maintain it as long as possible. At the high school, you will notice as you drove in, there's a new road between the student lot and the overflow parking. A lot of the drain boxes have been replaced that were failing, starting to sink. We have a little drainage problem on this side of town. Part of that's the city, part of that, there's nothing we can do about, but we're doing the best we can. The new roof over the auditorium, that roof was quite old.
Um, the new roof over the auditorium, that, that roof was quite old. It was 22 years old and it was starting to fail. So we got the auditorium roof replaced and now we're getting ready to do some work on the auditorium stage floor. So now let's get to some fun stuff, not just the replace, replace, replace. Uh, the new diving boards and stands. The, the boards and stands are in, they're at Spear Corp. Uh, they marked the tile two days ago and they're going to come in, repair the tile that needs tore out or needs to recover and, uh, get that going. I would say within the next two weeks, we should have finished diving boards. That's what I would say. Welding Lab Edition is this picture here. It doesn't look like that even today now. There are four walls now. They put one up today. Um, it's going pretty fast. Uh, we are waiting on steel. That's what's dragging our feet. Everyone's waiting on steel. So the steel columns, the steel beams, we can't get it under roof, so it's putting the electricians behind and so on and so forth. But they're working diligently and we're supposed to be getting the steel next week. Tennis court. This is the tennis court pour. Uh, these guys start at 3:00 AM in the morning and the neighbors aren't really happy about that. They've been over more than once, but, uh, yeah, we get started, it takes 40 concrete trucks. It's 400 yards of concrete to pour three tennis courts. They start at 3:00 and they finish floating about 1:00 PM, right around in there. These guys are really getting after it, working hard. Courts eight, nine, and 10 are poured. Courts four, uh, court one is poured and courts four, five, and six are poured. So we just have a, one more big pour to do and we're done with getting the courts poured and then the sidewalks will start to go in.
When can they start playing on the court?
Well, we're hoping, uh, Leslie coatings has to come in after the, the cure time has expired.
It's 28 days, cure time, is that what Charles was telling me?
28 days is what I believe they've told us.
For a full cure, it's 28 days.
Before the coating can come in.
And hopefully Leslie will be on site and we also have Musco, they'll start putting up the new lighting system.
Some of the lights arrived today. Boxes of lights arrived today.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. This is just a picture of what you really bought at the tennis court. This is post-tensioned concrete. This isn't asphalt. There are 147 cables running through that concrete and they're all tensioned at 7,000 pounds, um, with basically a Jaws of Life machine. It comes up and just keeps stretching, keeps stretching till we hit 7,000 pounds. That is supposed to keep that court together for the longest period of time possible. All the courts are done that way.
Next slide.
And finally, the football field. Obviously, the excavators came out, dug up the football field, got rid of the old dirt. This picture here is actually the stabilization process. Uh, the dirt was soft and full of moisture. We had to blend in 5% cement. This is equivalent to building a highway. Uh, that's, that's what that machine, the white machine normally does. Uh, we put a 5% cement, uh, mixture in there per cubic yard of dirt and once that pulls all the moisture out, it hardens up the field so you can build on it. After that was done, we hauled in 700 tons of stone and fines and then laser leveled that. It's, it's a lot of work and it's amazing that two men did a great deal of this work and they're two men.
And hand raking the corners. They were hand raking the corners.
Yes, and even raking the corners. That's absolutely correct. They have started laying the turf today. We have about 25 yards of turf on, on the field right now and we hope by the end of the week, uh, to have a green field all the way down. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Tennis court, Jim, where you had the cable sticking out, that'll be a back filled with dirt on it, so that'll be leveled.
Absolutely. Those will be cut off and then brought to grade. Yes.
Will be blue again?
We're going to use, uh, US Open colors, so there's kind of a clay and, clay and blue, right? I think it's a clay and blue. It's the colors that we've looked at. It's not exactly US Open colors. It's super close because I think the US Open colors are copyrighted or something like that. So it's very, it's very close to that color.
So will we have professional tennis players come off that court then?
Guaranteed.
Yeah.
Guaranteed.
I didn't pick the color.
Sir.
All right.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Congratulations.
I will add that, um, Schmidt has been very good to work with on this and their onsite person, Eric Wolf, has been very good and supportive. On top of that, the contractors, you can really tell they're taking pride in what they're doing. They want this to be an amazing product. Mots on the football field, the tennis court, they want this to be a showpiece. The guys doing the welding lab, they want this to be a showpiece. It's really amazing. We had another contractors meeting today on Zoom. We've had them every week, uh, and these guys really want us to go and look amazing. I'm just, I mean, they ask you, what can we do for you? And it's like, okay. It's just, they're very accommodating and they want Lebanon facilities, these to be their showpiece and, uh, kind of makes you feel good when you get a chance to talk to them and work with them. So I wanted to pass that with you. Thank you.
One more thing, too. We got the play clocks in. Play clocks were installed, too. I don't know if you mentioned that.
Play clocks were installed.
Yep, yep. Should get a scoreboard soon. I don't know what the date is on the scoreboard, but...
Scoreboard IDs are up in the...
I, yep. Yep.
Okay. All right.
Charles, one more questioner.
Yes, sir.
Are we running good on budget?
Um, we ran into a couple stumble blocks. We still have some retainage we haven't used, but, uh, the, uh, welding lab equipment that we thought was going to be paid for, that company's ran into problems, so we're going to have to fund that. So, uh, it's a little tighter than I would like and we're probably going to tip the bucket here. We still have some retainage, but we'll probably have to look at some additional sources, maybe from the other geo bond. We'll cross that bridge when we get closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Moving on.
Um, Mr. Bertrand, I would like to make a motion that we table item number seven and move that to our July meeting, please.
Have a second, Phil? Okay, any, um, any questions? All right. All those of moving item number seven to the July school board meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Item number two, approval of minutes for the May 19, 2020, uh, meeting.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Any questions about that? All those in favor of approving the minutes from our May 19, 2020 meeting signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number three, certify work session. That was on June 30th, uh, June 3rd, I'm sorry. Need a motion to certify the work session content that we had?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions about that work session content? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Item number four, audience to visitors. Didn't have anybody sign up. Item number five, consent agenda for routine business matters. Mr. Tate?
Yes, my pleasure to report to the board and the community at this time our monthly financial report. As of the end of May, our education fund has expended 38.82% of the budget, operation fund at 35.17% of the budget. At this time, I'd asked for approval of claims numbered 51236 through 51382 and the payrolls dated May 29th and June 12th. The claims total 7,718,630.38. Payrolls total 1,724,413.21 for a total of 9,443,043.59. And of the claims, 4.4 million of that is for our debt service payments this month.
Board, I need a motion to, uh, basically pay our bills and pay our employees.
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions about this? All right, all those in favor of paying our fees and our bills, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, agenda for routine staff matters. Dr. Millman?
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. Um, I think I'll just bundle them together this meeting. There's no reason to separate them. Um, under 6A, um, they're classified. We're recommending our 2000, if I get this right, right, 2019 Fall Homecoming Clean for Buildings and Grounds Work, uh, around the district, so happy to make that recommendation. Um, Lowell Miller, fifth grade teacher at Central Elementary, submitted his letter of resignation. That's under 6B. Beth McAfee, first grade teacher at Harney Elementary, has submitted, uh, her letter of retirement to the district. Uh, and Diane Scott and Curriculum Director and Mary Dickerson, Assistant Principal at Perry Worth, uh, submitted their letter of intent to retire within five years, under 6C. Uh, Mr. Dunshee recommends Ashley Starkey as a special education teacher at Lebanon Middle School. And Tracy Shriver recommends Chantel Mills as a special education teacher at Trader's Point. This is a replacement for Carol Weekly, who recently retired. Uh, Amber Moore recommends Kristen Heike as a second grade teacher at Perry Worth Elementary. I haven't met Kristen yet, but I like her already. She's a former Lebanon grad and a boil maker, so, uh, can't wait to meet her, congratulate her. We can enjoy having gold and black on both ends, right? So of that, so that is it for our routine staff matters this evening.
Okay. Board, I need a motion to accept our classified, certified, and staff communications.
I'll make the motion.
I'll put Lisa's, like, second list. Any questions about any of those?
Have we, have any more openings that need filled for teachers?
Um, Mrs. Outcult has recommended a candidate to me for special education. We're working out some final contractual items there, um, just today, so it wasn't yesterday, so it did make it to this board meeting. I think that's the only vacancy, so thanks for the reminder. I need to get back to her at the end of this meeting so we can get that buttoned up. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of, uh, accepting the agenda route, agenda for the routine staff matters or classified, certified, and staff communications, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item number eight, Geo Bond 2020. Mr. Tate?
Yes, um, you're probably thinking, we did this once already, didn't we, Charles? We did, but either I failed to get the advertisement to the paper or the paper lost it in the shuffle. So because it wasn't advertised, we had to advertise for the first time a couple of weeks ago, so we're going to go through this process again.
Okay.
So at this time, I opened this up for a hearing on the Geo Bond 2020, which is $5,350,000 for, uh, what's called the Additional Appropriations Resolution. It gives the board and me the authority to expend the dollars from the Geo Bond. So I open up to the public and the board any, an opportunity for questions, comments, or concerns. Hearing none, I recommend we close the hearing. And then at this time, I'd ask for board approval of the Additional Appropriation Resolution. I says, as I stated, this establishes the appropriations allowable to be expended from the Geo Bond of 2020 of $5,350,000.
Okay.
Ask board approval of that resolution, please.
Right. Board, I need approval for the Geo Bond for 2020 for the, adopt the Additional Appropriation Resolution. Motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions about that? Okay. All those in favor of the Geo Bond 2020 for the, adopt the Additional Appropriation Resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number nine, request approval of parking lot seal coat and striping. Mr. Tate?
Yes, we have multiple, um, areas at different facilities that we are, again, trying to extend the life of our asphalt as it is expensive. So we have, I believe we have three of our own crews, primarily college students, that have been doing a lot of the crack fill out at these sites. So as they finish, we'd like to bring in, uh, another company to seal the parking lots and restripe them. And those are delineated in your notes. So our recommendation here is to hire autos out of Greenwood for $79,776 and this will be paid out of the 2018 Geo Bond.
All right, board, I need a motion to request approval of parking lot seal coat and striping and awarding autos. Do that at 79,776.
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions about that?
When will they get started, the autos?
I'll be sending them the purchase order tomorrow and I believe our high school lot is just about ready to start, so as soon as they can fit into the schedule. And they're pretty efficient. Once they get in here, they get moving.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of accepting autos of, uh, rate of 79,776 for the, uh, seal coat, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 10, request approval of revised LHS Course Description Guide. Mr. Rourke?
I'll, I'll take it, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'll take it. I'd ask Mr. Rourke to be here if you had any questions for him this evening, but, um, this is just to add back really, uh, two, uh, courses that was in the previous course guide. This is based on enrollment, uh, and the need to continue, uh, these courses for another year. Uh, so these are not courses that are new, uh, to the course guide, the Civil Engineering and Architecture and Engineering Design and Development. So this is a request to add those back to the course guide.
All right, board, I need a quest, uh, the approval of the revised LHS Course Description adding, uh, keeping 5650 Civil Engineering and Architecture and 698 Engineering Design and Development. Any motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Get Lisa in there?
First.
Yes. And Robert, you second it?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions about those two courses? Okay. All those in favor of the, um, revised LHS Course Description Guide, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, renewal of young scholars preschool contract.
Mr. Fettig and I are both here if you have any questions about the Young Scholars Program contract that you have been given.
Board's having...
No changes from past? I didn't see any changes that really that addressed from past.
No changes that were not related to COVID or just language that was duplicated multiple places in the contract.
Okay. Pascal, how many years have you been doing this for us?
We'll, excuse me, we'll be starting on our fifth year.
Fifth year, okay. All right. All right. Is there anything else there, Mr. Martin? That you need to talk about?
I have no significant changes that I need to point out or any, basically, just any questions that anybody had about it is why we're bringing it to you this way.
All right. Board, I need a motion to renew the young scholars preschool contract.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Robert? Any questions for Mr. Martin or Pascal?
Is it, is it going numbers where you want them? I remember when we started at one school, now we're at Perry Worth and Harney. Are your numbers where you want them?
Well, we're actually having to begin with this, so yes. So at this point, I mean, we, we have, we've gotten as big as we need to be and as big as we can get for the size of our present school. But the population is starting to grow to where it's, it's more than a pre-K. I mean, it is a Lebanon School Corporation kindergarten and program. And it is really growing and it is ready for more expansion than it is. And so yes, our numbers are where they need to be.
For this fall? You already have a waiting list?
I mean.
For this fall, you mean? You already have a waiting list?
Yes.
Really?
Even with the scare, we, we've been, we've been planning as best we can as far as the reopening. But even with the scare that we had, we basically had planned on opening somewhere.
Yeah.
With the hope that we would be at the school. And so people are signing up and have the confidence that, and we have the backing of the Lebanon School Corporation. And we know they'll make the right decision as to what we need to do. So we relate that confidence to our parents. And so they're signing up.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of renewing the young scholars preschool contract signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
All right. Motion passes. Item number 12, renewal of base contract. Mr. Martin?
I also bring the base contract with Pascal and the Mental Health America and request your approval of this contract. We had toiled over the insurance that I contacted you and discussed. We're going to edit the policy that's 20 something years old that calls out some old information. So we're going to modify that at the point or before we actually engage or start this contract.
Okay. Board, I need a motion to, for the renewal of the base contract?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Lisa? Any questions about the base contract? Okay. All those in favor of renewing the base contract signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13, approval of joint services agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Bertrand. For you is the revised Joint Services for Special Education Agreement. It took us a while. Mr. Tate and I worked on this with the other superintendents. Primarily did a lot of work in Article 3, making sure the language for the fiscal agents, which we are for the, for the services, aligned with Indiana code language a little bit more specifically and some other wordsmithing areas. But essentially, the document is unchanged from a functional standpoint. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board, I need approval of the joint services agreement. Any motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions for Dr. Millman on the joint services agreement? All right. All those in favor of approving of the joint services agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14, second reading of policy updates.
I'll get it right this meeting. I think this one actually requires action.
Yep.
Part of the board. There are 20 policies for you. Do you want me to read them all to you?
No.
Okay. So of the revised policies for your consideration this evening.
Thanks. All right. Board, I need a motion to accept the second reading of the policy updates.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Smith, can you help that lady? Thank you.
Okay. Board, I need a motion for the second reading of the policy updates.
What happens if we don't keep the doors locked?
I'll make the.
I'm going to put down Liz. I heard her first. Yes. Who'd like to second that? I will second it. All right. Any questions about the second reading of the policy updates? All right. All those in favor of the second reading of the policy updates signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Okay. Item number 15, request approval of LCSC Plan for Reopening of Extracurricular Activities. Mr. Levine?
I might take this one as well from Mr. Levine. And he's here as Mr. Rourke was, if you have some questions regarding this. I'd like to, I mentioned this at the last board meeting, that Mr. Levine and other athletic directors, Amanda Scobles, were this this evening as well. And thank them for their hard work on this. Dr. Kraft went through the CDC documents, went through Indiana Department of Health documents, went through the IHSA recommendations, went through the IDOE recommendations, and tried to coalesce that into one comprehensive document that could be used by athletic programs in the Sagamore Conference. Western Boone's School Board approved a very similar plan for them as well. Obviously, you have some unique tweaks that might be, have some uniqueness to your school district. But want to thank them for all of their hard work on this. As you know, the IHSA is open to sports beginning July 6th. So we need to have some things in place for that. And we brought this to you tonight for approval. And any questions you may have regarding the opening? We are also following this plan with regard to co-curriculars and extracurriculars. They're mentioned in the plan as well. So this is an athletic and a co- and extracurricular entry plan. What is different is this document spends most of its time talking about the three phases of athletic reentry. And for the co- and extracurricular activities, we're asking them to submit their specific plans for reentry to their principal at least 10 days prior to when they want to start. And then they'll go through that and through this document and make sure that there's some alignment. Got a little bit confusing trying to get show choirs and marching band and other extracurriculars to fit with the language that was primarily written for athletics. So we've elected to allude in this plan that they will have to follow these protocols. But as far as the scheduling and the phases and things like that, for them, it would be more principal to sponsor. So, but Mr. Levine is in, Amanda's here this evening to answer questions as well as I can.
All right. Board, I need a motion to request approval of the LCSC Plan for Reopening of Extracurricular Activities.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Lisa? Any questions about that? Have we had any school say, we don't know if we're going to play anything? Or we are, has anybody in our conference or any of the schools we got, any of our sports said, we're not, we're not playing?
Yeah, there's, there's no competition allowed until after Phase 3. We have to get to Phase 3, which is August 15th, which is actually the first competition date. So nobody is going to be competing with other schools. They're allowed to in Phase 2, but nobody has given permission for transportation and everything. So it doesn't look like anybody's going to compete with somebody else.
Right.
Until August 15th, which is the allowed day, which would be the first football scrimmage.
Right.
With the Bubba would be that setting. However, girls golf does start July 31st. And their first competition date allowed by the IHSA is August 3rd. So we don't have a match on the 3rd, but we do have a match prior to August 15th.
Right. But you haven't heard anybody say?
No. In fact, most of the ADs have agreed that they're not going to compete against other schools. They don't.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question.
Yeah.
Now everybody is on into the three-phase process and ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready to see some tennis balls flying on those new courts.
Yeah.
Speak for myself.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of requesting approval of the LCS Plan for Reopening of Extracurricular Activities signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item number 16, other business. We do have, July 7th will be online registration. So make sure, I'm sure we'll get that all announced. I think we've already had some stuff already.
Yeah, we've had kindergarten roundup, which is going strong. And, you know, one of the lessons learned in a positive way through this COVID-19 crisis is we've, we moved to an online format for kindergarten families to give us their intent to enroll and go through a lot of the processes of that enrollment. And then our clerical staff was able to reach out to them. And it's actually been a very efficient way to do that. Efficient for the parents. It's been helpful for the schools to get a handle on that. So it may be something that we're doing on into the future. But yes, Jen Todd, our communications director, has posts ready to go. Start opening up registration and a whole timeline set up for that for social media and communication to the parents.
Okay. July 21st is our next regular scheduled board meeting here at 7 o'clock. We do have a special session scheduled for June 25th at 8:00 a.m. Does the board have anything else they'd like to add?
Thank you for all you've done on all this, everybody. I mean, it's.
I can't stress it enough. I mean, this is something that, it's not just Lebanon schools and Lebanon school boards talking about. So please, don't go on social media and make assumptions. Call your superintendent, get a hold of your school board.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.